Six, five, four, three, two, one. You're on.
Okay, welcome everyone to tonight's Monday, January twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty one, virtual regular meeting of the Livermore City Council at seven P M. So we had no closed session, so I'd like to call this meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Carling.
Here.
Councilmember K.
Here.
Councilmember Monroe.
Here.
Vice Mayor Banano.
Here.
Mayor Warner.
Here. Uh, next up is the pledge of allegiance. If you can follow me along. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Next up, I'd like the city clerk to make an announcement with how we're gonna be conducting tonight's meeting. We've got a good new capability she will be talking about.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to share my screen when I make the announcement. Good evening. Tonight's meeting will include the availability of Spanish interpretation over Zoom. All participants will see an interpretation button, which looks like a globe on the toolbar at the bottom of their Zoom's Zoom screen and must select either English or Spanish. Please do not leave the selection on the off setting. This will impact your ability to hear the meeting. Participants must select either English or Spanish. Please note that the city is unable to see if members of the community are utilizing the Spanish interpretation channel. Therefore, you may notice pauses during the meeting as we give individuals who may want to partip- may want to provide comments using the interpreter some extra time. Any participants using the interpreter to submit a public comment will be given double the allocated time to submit their comments for a total of six minutes. If you experience any technical difficulties during the meeting, please use the Q and A feature. Please note, public comment will not be accepted using the Q and A feature this evening. When participating in tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person, per item. Members of the public can participate by using the raise hand feature or star nine if calling in when the item begins. Please do not wait until the public comment period opens for each item to raise your hand. Instead, raise your hand at the very beginning of each item. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced and their three minutes will begin upon being unmuted. Residents using interpretation services will be provided six minutes to submit their comments. Please note, the speaker is not required to answer any questions from the city council and the city council is not required to answer questions from the public. However, the mayor has the discretion to ask staff to address a speaker's comments when a council member believes it is relevant to a particular business item. The mayor will announce the conclusion of public comment period after comments have been voiced into the record. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, well, thank you. Now, we've got need to reorder the agenda so that the public hearing on redistricting can start at seven oh five. We're a couple of minutes early. Is that okay? Or do we uh, need to wait until seven oh five exactly?
Mayor. All right, Jason, go ahead.
Well, thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor, this is your city attorney, Jason Alcala. I would recommend you wait until seven oh five.
Okay, I think what I might be able to do is get the proclamation in, if that makes sense. Or we can just hang out here until seven oh five. Why don't we just do that? We'll wait till seven oh five. We've got um, looks like a minute and a half or so.
Very good. Thank you.
So while we're waiting for that, I'm going to mention we're reordering the agenda so that item six dot one uh, starts at seven oh five, and that's the public hearing to receive an update on redistricting. And then we'll have a seven oh five, we'll start with the staff consultant presentation, then we'll open it, the uh, the public hearing. So TV thirty, you could let us know when it's seven oh five. That would be good or so, or the city clerk, one or the other, then we can start.
I can do that if you'd like.
Yes, we just let us know seven oh five, and then we'll start the staff presentation.
That would be in fifteen seconds. Ten seconds. And five, four, three, two, one.
Okay, we have the staff presentation, please.
Honorable Mayor, this is Mark Roberts, your city manager. Now I'm gonna introduce our city clerk to kick the item off.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This is your city clerk, Marie Weber. Every ten years, cities with district-based elections are required to update or redistrict the district boundaries following the receipt of updated population data from the census to ensure the district boundaries remain substantially equal and still protect the rights of members of communities of interest. So far, data from the two thousand and twenty census has been evaluated. The city council completed the first of four required public hearings on October eleventh of two thousand and twenty one, held a workshop on October eighteenth of two thousand and twenty one, and tonight will be completing the second public hearing prior to maps being drafted. An overview of the city's outreach will be provided by Jennifer Netwig from Trepepi Smith, and then the city's demographer will provide a presentation this evening and accept initial direction regarding the composition of draft maps. And with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Netwig.
Thank you, city clerk. And I do have slides this evening. Um, if those, yep, there we go. Thank you very much. Okay, so good evening, members of city council. My name is Jennifer Netwig, a director with Trepepi Smith, the public affairs and marketing firm partnering with the city and with Wagner and Strategies to support communications regarding your redistricting efforts. So you may remember I shared an initial update with you back in mid-October, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you again tonight about the outreach and engagement effort so far about this important issue. So tonight we'll be covering essentially an update on your outreach and engagement efforts and a high-level overview of some of the significant communication efforts moving forward. The next slide. And we can hop right to the next one. There we go. So first, I do want to highlight the city's efforts to communicate about redistricting in Spanish as well as English. Um, social media, flyers, and other materials published throughout the process so far have been bilingual. And as you heard from your city clerk, this evening, public hearings now do include simultaneous Spanish interpretation um, without anyone even having to request it, which is great. Next slide. Here on this slide, you can see all the different types of media we have employed so far in your outreach and engagement to date. And while some of these are described in greater detail in the following slides, I do want to highlight a few important data points for you here. On the digital side, you can see that the website has had one thousand and fifty-five sessions as of January eleventh. There have been thirteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-two emails sent so far, and your social media on redistricting has had a reach of fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirteen. And then on the print side, I want to highlight one item in particular, which is the newspaper ad that has had a ha- excuse me, has had a reach of twenty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-one. And I have a later slide that shows a screenshot of that ad for you. And then, as a direct follow-up to some of your comments during the last presentation, there has been a concerted effort on in-person outreach, including staff participation in farmers' markets and redistricting materials being available downtown and in the Rincon Civic Center and Springtown libraries. Next slide. Here on this slide, you can see a screenshot of your dedicated website about redistricting, draw livermore.org, which was rolled out on September twenty eighth. On that site, community members can find extensive redistricting resources available in dozens of languages, including background information, F A Qs, meeting recordings, and other meeting materials, tools to draw draft maps and provide input on communities of interest, and options to subscribe to redistricting news and contact the city directly. Next slide. Our team has been working with the city to develop and share one social media post a week regarding redistricting and opportunities to get involved. And here you can see an example of the type of content the city has shared so far in both English and Spanish, as you can see. And this is a post that went out on January tenth, and it was boosted with just fifty dollars, reaching four thousand, three hundred and seventy-one Livermore residents. Next slide. And then on the print side, here you can see an example of the first flyer developed that was published in both English and Spanish and has been used so far to publicize the process. So in addition to being shared electronically, the flyers have been shared with schools, senior living facilities, libraries, the Chamber of Commerce, and other community groups. Next slide. Here you can see that newspaper ad that I mentioned earlier. So, and this was run in The Independent on January thirteenth. Um, and basically, you worked with the city to develop and submit this newspaper ad that you see here. Next slide. And then just a few final updates for you, and these are on the in-person side of things. Here you can see the city's booth, which was staffed at the farmer's market on January ninth and January sixteenth, and the city team interacted with about eighty community members at each of those events. Next slide. And then the last update I have for you is about redistricting kiosks. And through these kiosks, in-person materials are now available um, at the three libraries you see listed here, the Livermore Valley Chamber of Commerce and in the city clerk's office. Next slide. So now just touch on a few of the significant outreach efforts planned as we move forward. Next slide. So here tonight, we're in public hearing two, so you still have public hearings three and four to look forward to, and the big date there that will really be publicizing for public engagement is the draft maps due date, which is January thirty-first. So by publicizing that date, we'll hopefully get as much engagement as possible in terms of people providing their input either on communities of interest or actual proposed plans. And we will, of course, continue to use all of the tools that we mentioned here today to continue to publicize each milestone in the process moving forward. So thank you again for the opportunity to speak with you tonight, and with that, I believe Mr. Wagner will be presenting next to share additional information with you about the redistricting process. Thank you.
Good evening, and I believe there's the second PowerPoint already to bring up. And uh, as a reminder, if we advance to the next slide, uh, this hearing is the second of the two hearings that we're gonna have before those draft plans are released. Uh, and then we're gonna have two more hearings coming up for those, and if the last hearing was a little tedious and a lot of redistricting school, the good news is this one will be much shorter from my end because this isn't really me talking to you about redistricting and doing redistricting one oh one, but rather, this is the chance for the public and for the council uh, to provide direction the other way and provide direction on what you want to see in those draft plans for the next meeting. Because if we advance to the next slide, you'll notice again, uh, on February fourteenth, we're gonna have a lovely Valentine's Day together uh, to look at those plans, and as was just noted, the deadline for public who wants to submit their own plans is January thirty-first. And if people want to know why is it that date, uh, that date is so that there's enough time to take those plans, uh, digitize them, put them in a common format, run all the statistical data on them, and get them published at least seven days, where goal is to get them out at least seven days before that February fourteenth meeting. So for members of the public who don't necessarily want to submit their own plans, but do want to look at the plans both put together by myself and by their fellow Livermoreans, I don't know what term you use. Uh, you'll, they'll have plenty of time to look at those and bring back that meek feedback on the February fourteenth meeting. That again will be an opportunity for council to provide additional direction so that we can bring revised maps back on March fourteenth, where if necessary, you can make some changes live during the course of that meeting, and by the end of, by that mid-March date, be able to select your final plans if we advance. Uh, again, I will not go through all these criteria again, but these criteria are important to just kind of keep in the back of your head tonight because these are the places where, for example, you could provide direction. So as an example, here is an understandable boundary. So here's a street, for an example, that might make a good boundary between districts that I should look at. Or here is a community of interest that, you know, we should try to see if we can keep together. Those kinds of things, as you're seeing on the screen, are really a good place to start to think about both for the public and for the council, the kind of direction uh, you may want to give. I'm not going to go through all these. I'm going to touch on a few very briefly, and if we advance to the next slide. If you look at equal population, and these are your current district boundaries, one of those big markers we look at is what's the difference between the biggest and the smallest district, which in this case would be plus three point eight and minus four point five, which produces a total deviation of about eight point three percent. And that number is important because uh, we're gonna be aiming for a total deviation of under ten percent. So your existing boundaries do meet that critical first marker of the districts being of equal size. So those existing boundaries, if at the end of this process, are the boundaries that uh, folks want to keep, uh, that is a valid option. Those boundaries would be legally compliant. It doesn't mean you have to keep them, and that's really the point of this process, is to decide what you, the city wants to do moving forward. And if we advance, the other concept I really want to touch on is, again, this concept of neighborhoods and communities of interest, which are fundamentally just who are the people who should be going together for purposes of fair representation? And there's no, we can look at existing city planning information. When we look at the interactive software, uh, you'll be able to see some of that data we have available, but there is no set defined data set of those. So that's a place where, again, council and public can provide direction tonight of what are those areas, who are those people who really should be kept together uh, for purposes of representation on this body. We advance the slide. So while we're looking at these, and these are things to just kind of keep in the back of your head, and again, where you can provide direction this evening is we're gonna try to get districts of roughly the same size. That doesn't mean they have to be exactly the same size. We want to look at those traditional redistricting criteria you saw before, and when we do that, we want to ensure that race is not the predominant factor in the process. And if we advance, again, as noted, there was, and you saw, there is a dedicated website for this information, a dedicated email, and those have all the materials on there for, again, public who wants to after this evening, submit additional testimony, submit their own community of interest maps, or submit their own redistricting plans. And with that, I'm going to vary, uh, I will note for the council, uh, we do have the interactive software available this evening, which is a map of the city where we can bring up various layers uh, and let you see, you know, for example, overlapping public facilities, policing, you know, whatever kind of information you want, we can bring that up. Uh, I will defer to the mayor. If at any point you do want that uh, loaded up, we can put that on and share with the public. Or if not, uh, the public can just go ahead and provide their uh, and the council can provide their info- their feedback directly, and with that, I will stop talking.
Okay, thank you. Uh, what we'll do is open the public hearing and then bring it back to the council for deliberation, so uh, would officially open the public hearing now, and city clerk, do we have anybody who wishes to address us?
Yes, Mayor, there is a one request to speak. Carl Wenti, please unmute yourself.
Would just like to take this opportunity to say thank you for what I'll do. This is part of government, part of how the sausage is made. Redistricting, taking census data, rolling it forward. So we have government that is that is of the people, by the people, and for the people. So thank you, city staff, for what you do. Thank you, those that put on a bulletproof vest to go to work for what you thank you to keep us safe. Thank you to those that teach our children. Thank you to those that take care of our community, uh, of the people, by the people, for the people. This is part of what it looks like as a sausage is made. Thanks for what you do. Make good decisions. Namaste.
Do we have anyone else?
No, Mayor, there are no more requests to speak.
Okay. Okay, I'll close the public hearing and bring it to the council for deliberation and got more council than public talking. Uh, let's see, we've got Vice Mayor Banano.
Yeah, thank you for those presentations. I have just a quick question about the population total you show on slide five, I think it is. Um, I, I know you've adjusted it, or you have a note there saying it's adjusted for incarcerated populations. I don't know whether that means it's adjusted up or adjusted down. And my familiarity with the number, because I worked on the COVID task force and we were looking at the latest census data, I thought the latest number for Livermore was closer to eighty-nine thousand. And I'm just wondering if you know what the difference is. I, it doesn't seem like the incarcerated population would be that big a difference, but if you could speak to that.
Sure, and uh, and I'm happy to verify the information, and we always will, but that when they, we're talking about adjusted populations for prisons, it's about taking folks who in, are in federal or state facilities and reassign them out of those facilities and then reassigning them back to where they lived before they were incarcerated. That reassignment is only done for state uh, incarcerated populations because it's the only ones we get the data for. Uh, so it should only nudge the number up slightly. Um, the reason you might be seeing slightly different numbers is that there's different sources for uh, estimates of the population. So the number we're gonna be using is based off of the federal census, which was conducted uh, in two thousand and twenty. Um, there are additional sources of information. For example, the federal government puts out its own estimate every year from what's called the American Community Survey. And so that produces a slightly different number. The Department of Finance does its own upsta- updated estimates every year. And so that may be where you're seeing a slightly different number from a different source.
I know, I'm familiar with all those sources. Um, I was, got familiar with the recent two thousand and twenty census data, the number that you, you know, the source you're using here, and again, if you would just double-check that, because I thought it was almost eighty-nine thousand based on the U S census data from two thousand and twenty. So I am using the same source. Just, just curious, that's the only question I have, just to make sure we're we're dividing by four the correct number. Thanks.
Okay, council member Carling.
Yeah, thanks, Michael, for that presentation. I want to also acknowledge the uh, the folks that have taken the time to make their own maps and send it to us, which leads me to my first question. I noticed that on District Four, now admittedly, I'm in District Four, so maybe I'm overly concerned about this, but in District Four in particular, I think the boundary is pretty easy to follow, and I saw several different plans from folks where they had what looked to me like the same uh, boundary that we have today, yet the population in District Four was different in each of those um, each of those plans that people presented. And I don't know why that is. Um, so I guess I would like for you to double-check as to why that might be. Uh, and secondly, I worry, and maybe this is something you can bring back the next time as we deliberate different maps. I worry a little bit about disenfranchising a certain number of people, and what I mean by that, in the two thousand and twenty election, people in District One and Two did not vote for a council member. If we move the boundary such that they now are in District Three or Four, they won't vote for a council member in two thousand and twenty-two. And so I worry, I worry about that, and I don't know based on some of the plans that people have presented to us. Admittedly, some of the plans have population deviations much smaller than we have today. Um, but it would be interesting to me if you could suss out the number of people that would be disenfranchised if we move the boundaries. Is that something you can do for the next time?
Sure, and, and I'm gonna try to touch on a couple of points here, uh, and if I miss a point, please let me know. First, uh, I did just check against the U S Census website, and the official number unadjusted from the census was eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five. Reason, again, you're seeing that slightly hate, higher number of eighty-eight thousand and six is because of that adjustment for incarcerated populations. Uh, so, uh, but I will again re-verify that when we're not uh, in the middle of a hearing. Uh, as to the question about uh, lines from the public, I've started importing those. I've not gone through them district by district to look at kind of what everybody did. I will tell you, on some districts, you may see slightly different numbers for districts that outwardly look exactly the same. There's two reasons for that. One is even small differences on the border may move a few people, right? So they may have, it might not be obvious that they moved two or three blocks deliberately. The other issue is that with some of the public plans, and this is not in any way a criticism, sometimes there'll be small technical errors. So for example, a block was misassigned and left non-contiguous, and something that they really meant to be in District Two is actually assigned to District Four, or there's a small unassigned block that they missed. Those are all the things that would not preclude a plan from consideration. We will a- bring forward every public plan, whatever those issues are, but we will note those technical issues, so um, if there is a public plan that the council wants to pursue, you would know that there are some, some technical cleanup that has to be done. So that may be what you're seeing there. Uh, and finally, to the issue you're describing, the issue that you're describing is actually has a term of art. It's called deferral. And it's the area where a voter basically doesn't get to vote for an office for six years because they get moved from a different district room that was gonna be up in two thousand and twenty-two and gets moved into a district going up in two thousand and twenty-four. Um, it is unfortunately a side effect of had the staggered elections, so it's common enough. It obviously has its own legal term of art. It is something that this body can consider, so if that is one of the directions is uh, a mo- it can't trump all the other criteria, but amongst those criteria, that's something you do want to keep track of. Um, that is something we can, uh, we can look at.
Yeah, you called it deferral. Is that what you called it?
Correct.
Okay, well, I would, I guess I would like for us to consider that the next time we have you back. So, thank you.
Okay, council member K.
Um, I have a couple of questions. So all of these draft maps given by um, community members, there's no, I, maybe I'm missing it. There's no communities of interest defined. They just created maps. Am I correct?
Um, of the plans that were submitted, and, and just to back up, those are just the kind of raw submissions, so they have not been put into formal format. We've not run all the demographics. We haven't looked at deferral. It's just raw data right now. Um, as of those plans that I think made your packet were as of, I tend to gaze ago, nobody had submitted any communities of interest through the tool. There is that option. Um, as of, I think yesterday, I think I did see a community of interest submission that had come in. It just was after the, the deadline for your packets. So that will be part of your packet for the next meeting. Uh, and then we do have those separate paper tools for folks who just want to submit a community of interest but not use the online tool.
Yeah, I, I just am wondering because I see some adjustments here where I'm making guesses of maybe why someone might have decided, but without a community of interest defined, I can't really tell what the, what the reasoning is, so I'm looking forward to seeing what those are. I also have a question. So these are submitted, that doesn't mean that these are necessarily legal because, for example, in one of them, uh, the district is not contiguous, so um, in the next packet, will it be clear which, which are raw data and which are actual options?
So every single map that is submitted by the public, we are going to digitize and provide you the statistics on. And that's important because I don't, if somebody's taken the time to do that, I'm, I'm not gonna be censoring anybody's submission, nor if there are those small technical issues, I'm not going to correct those initially because I don't want to speak for somebody else's voice. Um, but what we will do is note those plans where they have potential legal issues that would need to be addressed. I will tell you, looking at the how dozen or so submissions so far, a lot of them will have those technical issues, but are structurally, architecturally wouldn't require large changes in order to fix those. If there are ones that have those larger issues, again, and those are ones council wants to talk about, then we would of course, flag for you that there are issues that would have to be addressed.
Okay, great. I just want to make sure that we have that information um, for next time. So, thank you.
Councilmember Monroe.
Uh, hi. So thank you for, this has been really a fascinating process to follow, and I really appreciate all the um, outreach um, that has taken place and look forward to seeing more. Um, I have been following the maps with great interest. Um, and I hadn't even thought about the deferral question, which I've heard, first heard you say as the furl and thought, that's an interesting way to talk about unfolding a map or something. But um, the, I, I, it seemed, so I, I too feel it's important to look at, but I would point out that if if we only looked at that, we'd never make changes, so somehow we, we will have to make that balance um, going forward. going forward. As I'm looking at the maps, I'm not seeing any way to see how people have talked about them. Is there a place on right now to, to, to look at that?
So the way that
On the site.
I apologize.
Yeah.
No, no, that's So the tool itself is designed for people just to submit a map. Now, it's noted on the website, if you submit a map and then you want to submit a public comment to support your map and give your logic behind your map, then they can email that comment in and it'll be included in your packet as I, and that's why each map is given its own unique identifier through the online tool. So people can say eight, six, three, oh, two is the best because blah, blah, blah. The community of interest tool that we do have actually does eliminate that step and allows them to just say, here's my community of interest and describe it directly in the tool. So we do have those options available and you know, for the public, for particularly hearings, three and four, that'll be the opportunity for the public, whether they submitted plans or not, to say which ones they think do a good job and why, and provide that feedback to you.
Okay. And this would not be the time to say, hey, I think this is a great map, or I'd like you to look at this. This, we're still just gathering information.
So what we're working for right now is direction that would guide the draft maps that I'm going to put together. So if there is a plan that has been submitted, we're really not in the stage of saying, I want to implement Plan X. But if there is Plan X that you want to say, Plan X is something I'd like you to look at because, and tie it back to those criteria. I think it's doing a good job of preserving this neighborhood, and I really like the idea of using this boundary as a boundary between certain districts, or this street is a potentially really good understandable boundary for the public. So if there is that kind of feedback and it's referencing back to one of those plans, it can be. You can also, to be clear, provide feedback. That is not tied to any of those plans and just is generalized feedback.
Well, with that in mind, I'm trying to think how to, how to put, I've, I've looked at these and thought about this a lot. And I guess one of the questions, as I'm looking at this, the two things that strike me are some of the maps really have interesting population deviations. And so I'm curious about, about that, number one. And number two, when I look at the breakdown of how the Asian Hispanic, white and black communities break out, there's clearly differences there. And I'm wondering if you have any comments on how to think about those differences.
Sure. So on equal population, not knowing exactly what you found interesting, but on equal population, the one marker is we do want those districts to be within a total deviation of 10%. So if you see a plan that's submitted by a public where the difference between that biggest district and that smallest district is more than 10%, that's a place getting echo, that's a place where you know that plan would need some adjustments. Now it is up to this council whether you want to try to get those deviations smaller, but legally you would be in under safe ground. So that is one place for potential feedback.
Let me just jump in there for a second. So I, that, I was interested in, so for example, I'm looking at, I'm not sure which map this is called, but it's one in which the maximum is 23, you know, 23,500, the minimum is 23, around 400. I'm rounding a little. The maximum population deviation is 7.3%. So that fits the model. It's got other, well, anyway, I don't need to talk about the specific layout. Technically, that works. But boy, there's a, there's a whole bunch that come closer in terms of equal population that then does that. In thinking about, you know, okay, fine, it makes, it makes the legal cut. But let's say I had one that was 2.3% deviation. How do I think about that?
So how you would think about that is ideally, we want these districts to be as close to equal size as we can get. So everything else being equal, a district, if they're exactly the same, the district with this, the plan with the smaller deviations would generally be preferable. However, you want to look at those plans based on those other criteria and say, is this plan that is, has those larger deviations doing better at other goals? Ie, is it doing a better job of preserving communities of interest? Is it using better understandable boundaries? And if it is doing that better, and you say, we want to have, when you have those larger deviations, you want to know why, and you want to have a reason why, and it's want it to be tied to those criteria.
Okay.
And if you are trying to reference a specific plan, why that is through the tool, if you, they all do have that unique identifier.
They do, but when you, when you click them open, that, that number goes away, which is, yeah. So I, I guess the other question I have is some of the plans, the various racial breakdowns are, are very, very different. Again, I, you know, I hear you loud and clear, that's not the primary way to think about it. Again, is there, given Livermore's population, any way to, you know, to consider, you know, think about larger, smaller differences there.
Sure. So what I would say and what I'm hearing as potential direction, and tell me if I'm summarizing this correctly, is you know, not using race as a predominant factor. There are some differences in the makeup of communities of interest within the city of Livermore. And some of those will potentially correspond to issue, to issues of race and ethnicity and where there are defined pockets of communities that are defined, that are not justified by race and ethnicity, but looking at some of those issues, that's something you'd like me to look at in some potential options to see if we're preserving those communities effectively.
I'm not sure I quite understood. I was mostly just making sure I understood where we were right now. I wasn't actually trying to give direction on that. But I am looking at, you know, for example, in the Hispanic population, there are a few maps where the population is very evenly divided and a few maps where I think the difference is between 11% and 20% is the smallest to largest. And I guess in terms of providing, you know, in, in thinking about splitting versus lumping, I'm not even sure that that number is meaningful. You know, that, that, those differences, if it were, how would I think about it? So it's more, I'm trying to understand the, we are, where we have a sizable minority, what, what would be the best way to, you know, what would be the most inclusive way to think about this?
Absolutely.
It's really just a question. I'm not giving direction here.
And it's a great question, and I will tell you, this is the most complicated part of the law is relating around these issues. So that you're struggling with it is something the courts quite frankly struggle with every single decade. So the way to think about it is that, is go back again to those criteria and think about is there, if there is a community, for example, that let's say is, you know, among other ways defined by you know, being a heavily Latino community, it's also heavily immigrant and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. The law would generally say that community should be kept whole if you can, because it's a, if it's defined as a community of interest, right? So that would be a way to think about it is like, okay, that community wants to be kept whole. That said, if you have fill in the group that just is kind of diffused throughout the city that doesn't have, tie together, isn't a community, isn't otherwise tied other than just that they all happen to check the same box on the census. That's where you start getting into that issue of choosing race as the predominant factor. And what is that line? And I'm really not trying to be evasive. You know the city better than I do. So that's where you can tell me we do have a defined Latino community of interest that is also defined being socio-economic issues, integration issues, and that's something we'd like to look at in this process. Or to say, that's actually not the way Livermore works. And that's, again, tried a little evasive, but the best answer I can give.
No, that's, that's very helpful. And so I think as, as you're I, I guess what I'd like to see is maps that, that are have the biggest difference. So you know, that 20% and then how that would compare to a map with a small difference. So I'd like to be able to very carefully look at those, those differences and think about it from that standpoint.
So again, I
And that was that was direction.
And just so I'm keeping the lawyers and everyone happy and being clear, you know, those will be maps that will pop up that I will look at those issues of communities of interest and make sure I'm looking at that. They won't be drawn primarily based on just trying to hit our
I'm, I'm just looking at the maps that are already there and I'm just curious, you know, in, in bringing them out. Those are, those are some of the major differences I saw. Yeah, no, absolutely. I'm, yeah.
I will look at those public plans that differentiate those ways and see what those decisions that underline each.
Great. Okay, thank you.
At this stage, I'll just point out, we just went through this process a few years ago, and we did properly take into account all these factors. So this isn't the current maps we have, I went through that process and balanced all these factors. And we're quite well aware, it's a serious issue of not just looking at race or ethnicity to determine something. You're, you're not supposed to do that. That's the rule. So, and we didn't. And we do have things where we really focused on communities of interest in the last time as a key factor. And the dividing line we used were the major streets, under the assumption that people didn't communicate that well across the major arteries that we have. That was the key, and that we're keeping neighborhoods together. And I think one of the other things we found last time is that we've got different demographics dispersed throughout all our districts. So that's just observations from last time. Like, Councilmember Kik.
I was just wondering if as we move forward, you know, we still have time to get public feedback. Since people are just putting together maps and not really giving any reasoning, if we can maybe focus on asking for communities of interest rather than maps, or I don't know if you can actually tell them what to submit, but that it's hard just, just messaging of what is your community might give people better direction. I, I saw a lot of like, let's shape the future of Livermore, which is the same messaging we were using for our general plan outreach, which might be confusing. But you know, what is your community and, and where do you work, live and, you know, play or wherever, something like that because I feel like this is a complicated process and the more we can put it in just basic terms of where do you shop, where do you, where do you generally go in your life? What's your community of interest? Might be helpful. And I'm hoping that we get some more communities of interest because it's, that's, that's the key, not, not really streets or or racial demographics. So is that possible?
And I don't know if we still have Trepey Smith on and if they want to jump in here.
Absolutely. So this is Jen Nantway Guy and still on, and we can definitely incorporate that, and I'll take that for action. Thank you.
Well, okay. Councilmember Kik, are you done? I take it? Okay, Councilmember Monroe.
I just, I wanted to appreciate your comments on the, I, I did focus a lot on the, the racial, the, the race. I wanted to be clear that that was because that was the area around which I had the question. I didn't have questions around the community of interest, but I really support what Councilmember Kik has to say about that. That is the thing that I'm most interested in hearing more about. Hey, all of you people who are listening, please come and tell us about, about this. We really do want to hear because that is critical in making the, in, in, in informing these lines. But I also wanted to point out that yes, I remember sitting and watching the decision being made a couple of years ago for how to divide the city. And at that point, the population lines, the, the population deviation was not what it was now. At this point, it is, you know, somewhat over 8%, which is really coming up on that 10% in a city that's the size of ours. That actually is not, that, that's too big a deviation for me at this point. So I do think we have some more ahead of us.
So Councilmember, just so I'm summarizing, because I really want to emphasize that this is your process and I'm facilitating. Should I take that as direction to explore plans that produce lower, that lower that deviation from the, from where we are under the current lines and, and that's something
All of them, all of the draft maps that I've seen that have been submitted have a, so the answer is, is generally yes. I think in a city that is the size that we are, that's, you know, 10% is pretty, that's a lot of people. And having said that, you know, absolutely divide by four, you know, it's going to have other issues. So I'd like it, you know, there will, I accept that there will be a deviation and that other factors will be, will come into that, will, will, will be important as well. But lowering the deviation, I think is, that certainly, I mean, that is on that list, that is, you know, one of the major criteria. That's, that's right up there. So I think, I think it's important.
And just to, for the whole body, just, you know, the one thing I didn't say is tonight's not the night you have to reach a consensus. So that there are differing opinions on this body tonight is fine, because that's why you're going to get different maps. So you may get a map for me that is pretty much the status quo, because I'm hearing that direction is, you know, at least in certain areas in the map, the general happiness with the plan. There may be a plan then that tries to drive, that drives down those deviations or is looking at those some of those different plans that were highlighted. So so if somebody hears a direction from one council member that isn't how you feel, please say that's not how you feel, but also don't feel like that's a problem you have to solve tonight. So I've got that additional direction. Thank you.
Nice, Mayor Monroe. I mean, banana.
I caught yourself. Let's see. First, I appreciate my fellow councilmembers' inputs on all this. I think we'll all have a lot to talk about on the 14th when we have some draft maps and, and that'll be very, very important and interesting meeting for us. I also wanted to come back and apologize to Mr. Weigerman. You were correct. Good thing you're the demographer and I'm not. I was looking at a different, a different database. So I withdraw my comment about the population. And thank you very much, both of you, for the presentation tonight.
Anyone else? Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Just so you know, I did look, when the plans were adopted, the total deviation was 6.7%. So it has gone up. It was, but that's where we were starting with, just so the body has that baseline information.
Right, but it's still within the allowed limits.
Absolutely. So the
Okay, so it's still, it's still a, meets the requirement. And we can each individually have our own requirements, but with respect to the legal requirement, it's acceptable, correct?
Correct. So I did take your earlier comment as a note that one of the plans you may want to have is the current plan.
I would be surprised if you didn't believe this, have that as a starting thought. But he has for sure. And that
I apologize. I occasionally have jurisdictions where that's not the feedback, but we hate our current lines. So, but I have, have that direction from you, sir.
Yeah, we went through a lot of work, a lot of careful thought. And as I think where we're frankly, you know, getting my own opinion, there has to be a compelling reason to change. And I think if, if you could, if you go back to the, the current lines and the population deviations, I've, I've got a few detailed comments. If we were to shift things around, and I should say, I also resonate with Councilmember Carling's concern about the deferral. So, but anyway, if you could possibly, someone put up the current lines slide, because I could speak to that. See, is that? Okay. So if you, in order to balance this more, it sounds like we could shift from one to four. Okay, now shifting also from, it looks like one to two would work. Now, the problem is though, if you look at the the place where the place where, uh, one, two, and three kind of come together, there's that little triangle there. You, I don't know if anybody can put a cursor on it, but that little triangle is around Junction Avenue. And if you think about communities of interest, if anything, that could be moved, uh, that, and that's Livermore Avenue, that's the divider there, I believe, that little triangle could be moved from, and I would think it would, it could possibly enhance the communities of interest. But that's shifting from three to one, which isn't, uh, that helpful. Moving, uh, from one, District One up there in the middle over to the east into two helps balance the population. But really, you're taking people of a, what I believe is a true community of interest beyond just ethnicity, but it's also, uh, you know, a lot of other factors that go into it that would define a community interest. It would actually be splitting a community of interest to move from one across to two. Because and just if you think about the city and who's where, moving those across, I'm, I'm strongly against because it would be splitting up a fairly clear, uh, community of interest. Splitting them away because there's, on the east end of one, they're much more like the, uh, west end of one than over into, uh, two. So those, those are my comments on that, but very strongly, one of the maps we have to be considering is the current lines. So that's, uh, where I'm, uh, I think I've said what I've got to say on this. Anybody else last call?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just ask a question to make sure I got that correctly. So the direction I heard there is that between Districts One and Two, uh, to not move District Two to the west of Portola Avenue to moving two into one, because that would break a community of interest. And then two, that there's a community of interest that is roughly bordered by Junction Avenue, Livermore Avenue, and I assume First Street. And I was unclear on your, you're saying in different plans. Is that, it's currently in three? It sounds like that's acceptable or one? Was that the other area you were saying for that?
Yeah, it's in three. It's in three and you could make an argument that it belongs in one. That's all I'm saying, but that's a, that's just, but then that makes the problem worse, but not, that's the problem. The other thing is, you on the border between one and, and four is a pretty, you know, it's a major arroyo and streets, et cetera. Uh, you could cons- uh, adjust around there, I believe, if we need to do it just for the sake of some perceived need to reduce it below the threshold that we're already meeting, but that's a, a possibility and probably more over on the, uh, the right side, you know, in the southeast corner of, uh, one, although you know, I, I'm, I actually live in that area and I, you know, people in my area walk to downtown. I know as many across that border, maybe not as much, but so there is a connection into the downtown from the section in the southeast corner there. Anyway, that's my comments. Any others? Okay, I think we're, uh, uh, gonna wrap on this, uh, item. So I would have, you, you, everybody, uh, involved here get enough direction from us at this point?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, great. Well, thank you. Uh, this is really complicated and appreciate all the work you've, uh, you're doing on this. And I would, uh, also agree with the need to reach out and ask people to define their, uh, community of interest. I forgot to mention that earlier. So thank you. Okay, we've done item, uh, six dot one. And now we're on back to three dot O, which is a, uh, proclamation, uh, proclaiming January twenty-four, twenty-eight, uh, twenty-twenty-two as Data Privacy Week. And we'll be presenting the proclamation to, uh, City of Livermore Cyber Security Manager, Donald Hester, which is, and he's joined us and has been doing a great job helping us, uh, become more safe. So I'll be, uh, here's the, uh, presentation and I will, uh, or the proclamation and I'll just read some of the highlights from it at this, uh, point. Okay, so it's, um, we're proclaiming this data privacy week, January twenty-fourth. And whereas data privacy week began as data privacy day in the United States and Canada in January twenty-eighth. And whereas privacy is the recognition that a free and democratic society respects the autonomy of individuals to choose the circumstances and degree to which individuals expose their personal information. And whereas striking a balance between privacy and innovation can have tremendous benefits to our society. Uh, now therefore, the city council, the city of Livermore recognizes January twenty-four to twenty-eight as data privacy week in Livermore and officially supports the Na- National Data Privacy Week campaign led by the National Cyber Security Alliance and encourages all residents, businesses and employees to learn about data privacy and put that knowledge into practice to keep our connected community cyber safe. So with this, I'll present it to, uh, Mr. Hester. And do you wish to make any, uh, comments at this point?
Yes, Honorable Mayor and the city council members, uh, this is Don Hester, your Cyber Security Manager. I want to thank you for the proclamation and let the public know our website has a number of data privacy resources for individuals and businesses. Uh, so Livermore residents and businesses can go to our main page under the news. If you find the press release entitled Data Privacy Week, to find links to all of those resources. That's all I have.
Okay, I want to thank you again. And, uh, you know, it went from data privacy day to week and, uh, pretty soon it'll be year. And then we'll just gotta keep, this is something that's really important, I think, to all of us. I have a friend who just recently got his, uh, identity stolen, so major trouble. So we've got to really have to protect that. So thank you for all your efforts and hope everyone is quite cautious. So now, uh, we're on to, um, item four dot O, which is Citizens Forum. And at this point, I, uh, would like again for the city clerk to tell us, uh, everyone how they could participate. The directions are found at the end of the, uh, agenda in general for our virtual meetings, but, uh, city clerk, could you, um, explain how we're gonna do Citizens Forum tonight, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The city council's agenda provides opportunities for the public to participate in the meeting by addressing the city council in the following ways. First, for non-agendized items, the public has the opportunity during Citizens Forum to address the city council on any item of interest that is within the city council's subject matter jurisdiction. Next, for agendized items, the public can address the city council on each item of, each item of business it considers when the mayor opens public comment and should be focused on that particular item. Please note, a speaker is not required to answer any questions from the city council and the city council is not required to answer any questions from the public. However, the mayor has the discretion to ask staff to address the speaker's comments when a council member believes it is relevant to a particular business item. When participating in this portion of tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person, per item. Members of the public can participate by using the raise hand feature or star nine and calling in when the item begins. Please do not wait until the public comment period opens for each item to raise your hand. Instead, raise your hand now. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced and their three minutes or six minutes for translation services will begin upon being unmuted. As a reminder, public comment will not be accepted using the Q and A feature this evening. And the mayor will announce the conclusion of the public comment period after comments have been voiced into the record. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And it's, uh, just around eight o'clock and we allow up to a half an hour of public, uh, comment, uh, Citizens Forum. And then if there's any spillover, then we pick it up at the, uh, end of the meeting. So the clerk will let us know, um, as we approach the eight thirty or the five minutes remaining. So at this point, um, could we have the first speaker, please?
Yes, Mayor. The first speaker is Lori Souza, followed by Alan Marley. Lori Souza, please unmute yourself.
Well, good evening, Mayor Warner and City Council members. I want to take this opportunity to thank you for approving the DDLA for the Presidio Companies at your last city council meeting. I think the loan has a very good return on investment for the city of Livermore and its residents. By approving this request, you're moving the hotel project forward and addressing a long overdue need in the area of average tourism. Your proposal also provides a low cost solution to needed parking. Furthermore, your actions and leadership are delivering solutions that are consistent with the longstanding zoning for our downtown. You have preserved Blacksmith Square, built a beautiful Stockman's Park, and are close to providing us with a Livermoreian Plaza, all of which celebrate our heritage and protect our historic and charming downtown. So thank you.
Next speaker is Alan Marley. Alan Marley, please unmute yourself.
City Council and Mayor, uh, this month marks the hundredth anniversary of the construction of the Bank of Italy, which is the building on the corner of First and North Livermore, now the office of the Independent. On this occasion, I couldn't help but compare the past and current owner, Joan Sepla, who said, quote, "Throughout California, the original owner, A.P. Giannini, took extraordinary actions to support the disadvantaged," end quote. Joan Sepla is the owner of the Independent and the, an LVP PAC board member. She also funds and campaigns for special interest groups currently blocking affordable housing for our disadvantaged community and even for our teachers and service workers. Whereas A.P. Gi- uh, Giannini supported Livermore business with handshake loans, Joan Sepla is campaigning against necessary infrastructure for hotel, which is located, which is needed for local vineyards and approved, uh, by the majority of Livermore residents and the Chamber of Common Commerce. It's one thing to oppose affordable housing and harm local business. It's another to, at the same time, claim you're actually in favor of them. Just not here, just not now. Through her special interest groups, Joan Sepla has opposed Aramis Solar, Eden Housing and the Livermore Hotels parking lot, while saying she is in favor of solar, affordable housing and a Livermore hotel. And to be clear, the lawsuits she inflicts on this community are spurious attacks to veto our democratically elected officials with her money. Alameda County Superior Court Judge Frank Roche ruled in September, her special interest group must post a $500,000 bond because their lawsuit against Eden Housing is in bad faith or merely, quote, "for the purpose of delaying or thwarting low income housing," end quote. Joan Sepla and her special interest groups are harming this community and I'm tired of the deception printed in the Independent saying otherwise. It reeks of gaslighting. If Joan Sepla and those who support her campaigns wish to remembered with a fraction of the goodwill we have for A.P. Giannini, they would do well to reassess the needs of the 21st century and trust the more voters to know what's best for themselves. Thank you.
No more requests to speak, Mayor?
Okay, I'll close, uh, Citizens Forum. And we're now on to item five dot O, the, uh, consent calendar. So is there, uh, anyone who would, uh, like to poll a particular, uh, item? Don't see that. I will, uh, open public comment on the consent calendar. At this point, I'll point out that the, uh, consent calendar items are considered routine in nature and act upon by the city council with a single action. Uh, members of the audience wishing to provide public input must use the raise hand feature during the public comment period to comment on any of the consent calendar items. Do we have anybody who wishes to address us on the consent count?
Mayor, no comments have been received.
Okay, I'll close, uh, public comment on the consent calendar. Uh, do I have, um, Councilmember Carling?
Yes, I'll move consent calendar.
Councilmember Monroe?
I'll second, but I also want to call out in particular five point three, which is a replacement backhoe loader tractor, which I feel should be mentioned because of all the preschool children who will be very excited by large machinery.
Okay, do we have a, uh, roll call, please? Any further, any, I guess I'd say, any further discussion? If not, let's have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Carling?
Aye.
Councilmember Kay?
Aye.
Councilmember Monroe?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Banano?
Aye.
Mayor Warner?
Yes. Okay, passes unanimously. We're on to item seven dot one. Uh, oral report from the Director of Emergency Services regarding COVID-19 emergency. Like, we have a staff presentation, please?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. This is Mark Roberts, your Director of Emergency Services and your city manager. All right, we want to start off this evening with some updates from the last time we were together. We have, uh, returned to our cadence of having our, uh, updates every two weeks. Um, in response to the quickly developing, um, Omicron, uh, uh, portion of the pandemic. And so the council asked, uh, that we focus on several key areas. And so we'll get an update on those various areas. So, um, first of all, uh, I do want to note that, uh, because of the scale of the uptick in infections, um, testing, uh, results and overall statistical results from the county of Alameda, um, is now taking several days longer than it did, uh, when we had much, much lower numbers. And in a moment, you'll sort of see the, the dramatic scale of the changes. So it's certainly understandable, um, that, uh, throughout the system, both those who are entering the data and those who are having to work with it, um, and then ultimately post it. Um, so we do, uh, now have data which is roughly seven days or so, uh, back, uh, from the current time for some of these data points. So if you see that, uh, coming up on a slide, that is on purpose, that is the latest available data. You'll also see some of the data is a little more up to date. And those are cases where the county have assured us that, uh, that data is more trustworthy. So you have a bit of a mix on the timing here. Overall, you can see, uh, testing positivity rates, um, uh, from, uh, January twenty-first. Um, is it about eighteen, four point four percent, which is relatively where it was. Again, this testing is related to tests that are reported to the county. Obviously, this is someone who has an at-home test, uh, who gets the results and then ultimately does not interact with the healthcare system, would not be included in these numbers. Hospitalizations or seven-day hospital beds for COVID patients, um, is almost seventeen percent and that is up from nine point two percent. But you can see, um, the county has been noting that a- almost half of the hospitalizations for people who have COVID, um, they were hospitalized for another reason. So this is different than essentially, uh, former surges or previous surges, um, in that, uh, a, a chunk of the population or a significant number of the population is not essentially going to the hospital primarily, um, for their, uh, COVID symptoms. They're there for another reason and, and of course, a standard protocol is that, that everyone is tested. Our case rates really do tell the story here. Um, in January fourteenth, which is the latest, uh, reliable data, uh, available, you can see what our numbers are, about a hundred and eighty-eight cases per hundred thousand compared to sixty-three on December twenty-eighth. At the county, it's two hundred and twenty-three versus seventy-three. So you can see in both cases, a tripling of the total number of new cases, uh, per a hundred thousand. Now that is consistent with, uh, an infection period aligning with the holidays. The county was significantly concerned about that fact that, um, during the last couple of weeks of December, they were concerned that people would gather. And in fact, that is exactly what happened. And we did see case rates, uh, dramatically increase, um, during that time period. On the vaccine front, um, we, our most recent, uh, vaccine, uh, clinic was yesterday at the farmer's market. And, um, boy, we had an incredibly successful day. Had a number of volunteers who gave us a hand, uh, with that process and a big shout out to everybody, uh, on staff who, uh, gave a hand there. And you can see a couple of, uh, really great stats there. Two hundred and forty doses of the Pfizer twelve plus, uh, were given out, um, sixty-four doses of the pediatric doses. Um, and Alameda County was participating with us in that vaccine, uh, clinic. And so that meant that their vaccine incentive program, um, was available. Um, and you can see there, uh, that they are now concentrating their vaccine incentive program on, uh, youth ages five to seventeen and sixty-eight gift cards were given out to folks who participated in that. And if you're really good at math, you can figure out how many of those were between, uh, thirteen and seventeen, since the numbers don't. And if you're really good at math, you can figure out how many of those were between 13 and 17, since the numbers don't quite align. All right. Additional updates. One of the major changes in the past few weeks is that every home in the U.S. is now eligible to order four free at-home COVID-19 tests through the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services and the United States Postal Service. And orders normally ship within seven to 12 days. So on that one, it's really good to order those before you need them, since it does take a while for these to actually get to you. And you can do that by going to covidtests.gov to order your free at-home tests. These are rapid antigen at-home tests, not PCRs. They can be taken anywhere, and they generally give results within 30 minutes, so there's no lab drop-off required. So one of the questions that people have is, when should you use an at-home test? The CDC and Alameda County recommend that if you begin having COVID-19 symptoms like fever, sore throat, runny nose, loss of taste or smell, or at least five days have passed since you've come into close contact with someone with COVID-19, or you're planning to gather with a group of people, especially if any of those people are those that are at risk of severe disease or may not be up to date on their COVID vaccines. Do avail yourself if you have any need for COVID tests. In addition to that, Alameda County is aligning with CDC guidance on masks. So again, while a cloth mask is fair, and of course, one that fits well and has at least three layers, a cloth mask is way better than no mask. But even better than a cloth mask is our surgical masks, KF94 and KN95 surgical and cloth masks, and of course, the N95 masks are the best. So especially in situations where you're going to be around other people for a significant period of time, those better masks are a great idea. Local testing sites, we have several. Now, new this time is a mobile testing bus at Robert Livermore Community Center in the Loyola Way parking lot, and that starts on January 28th, and then it's going to be there every Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. They do take a lunch break between 11:00 and noon and a dinner break between 4:00 and 5:00 p.m. So they won't be doing testing during those hours, but the rest of that 12-hour period, they will be doing tests. Appointments are encouraged, but walk-ups will be accepted at that testing center. At Access Community Health in Pleasanton, the hours are Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, 8:30 to 11:30, so in the mornings. And then, of course, Stanford Valley Healthcare on East Stanley Boulevard, Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 2:00 p.m., and Saturday, 8:00 to noon. Los Pacitas College in Parking Lot P are available Sunday through Thursday, 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. So there are some choices there, as well as, of course, local pharmacies, your local medical care provider. And in cases across the valley and throughout the state, it is a bit challenging to get an appointment for testing, although we're catching up just a little bit. On the local vaccine clinic, Pfizer Youth Vaccine Clinic is going to be held at May Nissan Community Center on February 2nd. And of course, that's hosted by the city at the Park District and the School District and Access Community Health. The next time we'll be at the farmer's market is on February 13th. And of course, that is a city, county, and Holler's Pharmacy. And of course, that program, since it does have the county as one of the participants, you will be eligible for the county's youth incentive program we talked about earlier. And of course, the standing clinics at Stanford Healthcare at 1133 East Stanley Boulevard, and vaccine appointments at Stanford Healthcare for ages 12 and up is every day of the week except for Saturdays. And for ages 5 through 11, it is Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays that you can go to that location. And then, of course, check your local pharmacies and your local healthcare provider, because they also provide vaccine appointments. Vaccination data, fully vaccinated in Livermore is almost 76%, with 50% of the total population who has 50.4% that has a booster dose. And in Alameda County, 80.9% are fully vaccinated, and 54% have their boosters up to date. This is total hospitalization data, and this is through the last available date. So this is a little more than seven days old, this data. And you can really see that the spike now has outstripped sort of our fall spike that we had last fall. But we are not quite to the levels that we had last January, so that's, I guess, the good news, at least at this point. So you can see that our Livermore numbers, excuse me, we have, on this one, we have total hospitalized in the blue, which is the number on top, and hospitalized in ICU in the golden or yellowish color there. And you do see that for this surge, that the ICU numbers are not rising nearly as fast as the total hospitalization rates there, although the ICU numbers can trail slightly. So it's probably a little bit too early to get a total picture on that. Taking a look at seven-day rolling average numbers of new COVID-19 cases per 100,000 for both Alameda County and Livermore, Alameda County being the blue number and Livermore being the orange number there. And so you'll see that we had a total number of new cases per 100,000 as recently as the first weeks in December, at about 10 cases. And you can see here in Livermore that our number is getting dangerously close to 200 cases. And you can see that the county of Alameda is noticeably over 220 cases per 100,000. So really, a very dramatic uptick in the numbers. But you see in both cases, there appears to be just a little bit of flat. Again, it might be a little too soon to declare that we've hit the peak, since the data is trailing and continues to be updated even after that seven-day waiting period. But hopefully, by the next time we're in front of you with a report, we'll be able to get a little better data. At least preliminary data coming out of Dr. Moss, our public health official here in Alameda County, is that the health officials do believe that we may be past the peak of new infections. Of course, hospitalizations and serious illness trail that, but at least that, if it is true and continues to be true, is very good news for this particular surge. In addition, the Council asked that we follow up on the question of additional help for some of our local businesses, and in particular, our restaurateurs. And we have been working with our other Tri-Valley cities and our lobbyists to essentially support legislation for additional support for restaurateurs. And that actually does seem to be something that is in discussions at the state level. So we'll be adding our support to that program as we move forward. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Before we go to Council questions, do we have any member of the public that wishes to address us on this item?
Mayor, no comments have been received.
Okay, I'll close public comment on this, and now, let's see. Councilmember Kike?
Thanks for that. The new guidance for N95s as being the preferred or the best option and the opportunity to get tests mailed to your home, both of the programs that they're rolling out seem to completely miss an entire population. The unhoused population does not have an address to send testing kits to. And I'm just wondering if we can maybe get an update on what our homeless liaisons have been seeing out in the community? If there is something that we can do to get the folks that are unhoused some tests, because they don't have an address?
Very good. Councilmember Kike, yes, we can follow up with our nonprofit partners on that. I do know that we have had CityServe and our other nonprofit partners who've been working on that particular issue, but we will bring an update back on that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Monroe?
Hi, thank you. That was some ways sobering and in some ways actually encouraging. I am curious with regard to the hospitalizations and ICU. I think we talked about the breakdown of those who are vaccinated and those who aren't. Do we have that information, or is it still not available? So that was one thing, and the other is just, I think this is the first time I've seen Livermore numbers be below Alameda County averages, and I was rather heartened by that. Is that, am I reading that correctly?
So to answer the second question first, yes, you're reading that correctly, and that is a little different. We've had a couple of very short periods of time during other surges where we have been under the county averages. But right now, you are correct, we are, you know, the number of cases in Livermore is under the county average. Again, I want to caution that the last part of both of those graphs is the least, that we have the least confidence in that. And your first question there, I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Yeah, so first of all, yes, I know, I know you have the least confidence in it, but let me enjoy it for just a minute. The question was around the, if we had the breakdown on hospitalizations in Alameda County for vaccinated and unvaccinated?
Yes, the Alameda County Health Department website continues to carry that graph, which shows that hospitalizations and ICU rates are significantly higher in the unvaccinated than in the vaccinated population for there. I didn't include that one. We had a lot of graphs tonight. But that one, actually, if people are curious, is available on the county dashboard, and it's a very sobering one, where you can, you can see that the rate for unvaccinated folks per 100,000 needing hospitalization or ICU is about three times higher, or in some cases, even noticeably higher than that in certain populations, but that's in the average.
All right, thank you very much. That's all I've got. Oh, actually, wait, one more thing, which is thank you for pursuing the help for businesses. That's great.
And I did misspeak. It's at the federal level that those dollars are becoming available, so apologize. I did say state earlier, and that's not correct. So those dollars, that program that we're talking about is at the federal level.
Okay, I've got a couple of questions. First, you know, on the data, it's unfortunate that it's, you know, it's so rapidly evolving. And I don't know, is it just because of the number of cases that they can't keep up, or is something more fundamental happened with their reporting ability? So I don't know if you know, but it seems odd that in a time like this, where it's essential that the ability to report well has come apart. So do you have any thoughts on what the problem is?
We've asked the question quite directly, because of course, it is difficult to provide good information to policymakers if that data isn't there. And the two reasons that were primarily given was just the stress that that's putting on the frontline medical systems. And so they are sometimes having to choose between patient care and data entry. And that's what's causing the problem. In other words, that is not at all in any way, shape, or form an ideal situation. And the other is just the numbers. You know, we are 20 times where we were, and the data entry that's necessary to do that just puts them further behind. So they're, at the county level, are aware of this, and they are working to try and get it into better shape. We are seeing some very modest improvements, but we still have a ways to go.
So if, well, thank you, and I think, you know, the message that I would think we'd want to convey is that we're still in a serious problem here. And I think there are a lot of people that want, oh, well, it's mild, that it's, we're past the peak or something. But if you look at the peak where we're at now, how many times higher is it than we've ever had in the course of this? So the, you know, I don't think it's useful to say we're past the peak when we're way up there. And because it's not dropping down quickly, and it looks like, you know, they said, we want to, if you look at that one chart you had of the seven-day rolling average, it, you know, on that scale, it's going up pretty slow, and it's hanging up for a while. But it's, but in other charts, you see it dropping rapidly. So I don't, I don't know that we know what, what the situation is, and in a case like that, I think the message is that people should be cautious, frankly, and that everybody wants to look for some hope. But I would just hang in there a little bit longer myself.
So you are correct. We are four times higher than any previous peak, even that January peak. So we are 4X there. We are 20 times where we were just a month and a half ago. And so the fact that it's not getting worse is good news, but we are still in the middle of having an enormous, enormous number of cases. The, this variant is essentially highly transmissible and extremely widespread. So I think the nicest thing we can say is it might not be getting worse, but it is still worse than it's ever been as far as the number of infections. And you can even see the hospitalizations, while we haven't hit our all-time peak, that, you know, that chart there was still heading straight up. So you're correct, Honorable Mayor.
Yeah, and I think that Councilmember Monroe's question about the chart on the hospitalization, because I think we're trying to still motivate people to be careful and to get vaccinated, and just showing the impact of not being vaccinated is probably the best thing we can do to motivate people at this point, in addition to making it available. So that's, I mean, the vaccine's available. The other thing I want to switch over to is the economic side. Last time, you know, we did things like forgive the business licenses, et cetera. Do we have any thought on that? Because people are asking, what are we going to do? And I know the license fee is due now, so what's our thinking on that?
So you will remember that essentially, we did waive penalties and interest before, when we had required by law that they be closed. And you'll remember that there was a period of months where it was illegal to operate certain types of businesses. And for that reason, and in that case, the Council did direct that we waive penalties and interest. In this case, we're in a very different situation, and it really has impacted businesses very differently. Of course, there is no requirement by law that businesses be closed, but some, for some businesses, their business is a little stronger, because people, you know, the type of business, people are using more. In other cases, for example, restaurants or other things, people might not be going out to dinner as much as they were before this last surge. Our program that we have for business licenses, for example, does have a case-by-case ability to work out a payment plan. And that does usually involve essentially waiving the penalty and interest if you have a conversation with us prior to the due date for those business licenses. So because this one is so unique, this particular surge is hitting the businesses so differently, we haven't essentially moved forward with a broad waiving of interest and penalties. Obviously, that's up to Council discretion, but we still do have the ability to do that for individual businesses if there's a unique situation or a situation where COVID has hit the business particularly difficult, particularly hard during this last month or two.
Okay, well, thank you. I think that's a really good answer, and it will help those that are asking. And I know Vice Mayor Banano is the liaison to LDI, so that should be helpful to communicate there as well. Any other comments on this? Again, thank you for the information, and again, we'll keep on it on a, you know, every, every council meeting, and I still think we're, it's just astounding that there's so many cases that can't keep up with it in the data reporting. So that should be a good indication of where we're at right now. Any other thoughts here? If not, we'll close item 7.1. Okay, we're now on to 8.0, which is the Council Committee Reports and Matters Initiated by the City Managers, City Attorney Staff, Council Members. So let's see, who goes first? Yeah, I know. I was just going to say, well, you've got your, your new headset there. So you might as well go first.
That's because I'm home with the kids instead of in my office today. So I had just a ValleyLink meeting, and I have been added to a new special subcommittee. and um I have been added to a new special subcommittee um about making sure that we have good access and equity for all things ValleyLink coming soon. So I'm excited about that. And um Michael Tree is uh stepping down as Executive Director um of ValleyLink, um which is sad for ValleyLink, but yay for us because now Lafta gets his full attention. Um, and that's all I have to share, and no matters initiated today.
Okay, and he's got a good replacement at Valley, ValleyLink.
Yes, he does.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Carly.
I don't have anything to add um beyond what I reported uh earlier. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Councilmember Monroe.
Um, well, I covered um most of what I had in my uh report out earlier. I did want to mention two quick things um that uh I hi- highlight two of those things. One is that the uh Innovation Tri-Valley uh meeting this past, I think it was Friday, um was a a report out on uh DEI, Diversity Equity and Inclusion work being done. And um as we are, you know, now in twenty-twenty-two, um, one of the things I find very interesting is that the concerns that came following the murder of George Floyd are being enacted in small ways. Um, uh, not small in the sense of little, little tiny things, but things that take um thoughtful, careful, long-term work in order to make, to make substantive changes over time. They're not the kinds of things that get reported out uh in the news. They're not the kinds of things that make big, big splashes, but they're actually the way, I think, a really important way that we make changes going forward. So I wanted to to just, I was reflecting on what I was hearing at that meeting. It's true in a number of other areas, um and it's it's worth noting. Um, so that was one uh uh thing I wanted to note. Um, the other is that I don't believe I mentioned this at the last council meeting, um but um I had been placed on the Housing and Economic um Policy Legislative Policy uh Commission uh Committee of the um League of California Cities. And we had our first orientation there. And um as we go forward with that, that really excites me, being able to speak to uh issues uh particularly of housing and the way that um local and state interacts around uh around those issues. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Banana.
Yeah, I have a, just a couple of quick informational items um with regards to Livermore Downtown Inc. I think everyone knows that Roselle Snemcor is retiring. And she, uh her replacement, I was able to participate in the second round of interviews. And I believe that they have selected the candidate, they're making an offer. And if all goes well, they'll have a new LDI Executive Director in place first week in February. So that's good news. Um, second thing I want to mention is uh just before this meeting, we had the Lafta Programs and Services meeting where uh the committee recommended uh to the board, which will be at the board meeting on February seventh, that we proceed with the fuel cell-based uh transition plan to the zero-emission buses. Um, that's per the mandate from the California, State of California. And I think we were unanimous, and they also appreciated the opportunity to present here at our last meeting. So I will report back, and Councilmember Kick will be at that meeting as well, the board meeting. And um we'll report back next time on how that meeting goes. Uh, two more quick things. One, I had a chance to ride along with our homeless liaison officers. Officer Gray Carr and Martin, and I'll just say that they do just a tremendous job with our unsheltered population. You know, it's a really challenging environment, and they have developed just really incredible relationships with those members of our community. And I think it's a tribute to them that, you know, we have made, they have made um a real impact in in people's lives. It takes, it takes a while. Um, and I just wanted to thank them for that and just give them a shout out because it was a very thought-provoking afternoon. Uh, the last thing I wanted to mention is I got to participate in the grand reopening for the Goodwill store on Railroad. That store, that retail store, has been closed since the beginning of the pandemic. And it was really, again, another really um another good example of how nonprofits work in this community. They were closed for for really the two years. They still accepted some donations for anyone who used to drive around the back and and uh give them some donations, but the retail store was closed, and that put about seven people out of work for the pandemic, or they weren't able to work at that sh- at that store. And that's something that um a lot of these thrift shops employ people who have either been previously incarcerated, unsheltered, need a job, need some training. So that reopening was really um really very, very um uplifting experience. Got to meet the CEO of Goodwill Industries, got to meet a lot of the people who work in the store. We had the grand opening, we had the ribbon cutting at nine-thirty, and the store reopened at ten, and there was literally a line sort of around the entire complex. People were just very excited to be back into the store and be able to do their shopping there. So it provides jobs, it provides an opportunity for people in our community who don't have all the resources to buy what they need at really good prices. And it's a beautiful store, and the people there were uh really doing a great job. So I'll just end there. I'm sorry I went on a little bit, but I thought that Goodwill store event was really um was a was a great opportunity. So I appreciate the mayor letting me handle that one for him.
Okay, thank you. And I've uh, we use that uh store a lot to drop off our stuff. So it's, I'm glad to see it's open again. So thank you for going to that reopening. So the uh, I don't have too much to add to what I've got in the uh report. I will emphasize that uh last week was the U.S. Conference of Mayors Annual Meeting in uh Washington DC. I didn't go, but was able, uh neither did um Mayor Brown from Pleasanton, but the other, three other uh city uh mayors from the Tri-Valley went. And we did have a chance to meet in a hybrid way with the elected officials, as well as uh people from Department of Energy and Department of Transportation. And I'll just say we were all unified and very emphatic uh for pushing ValleyLink and uh hydrogen. And there was, when it was a lot of good receptivity to both of those things. So hopefully, we'll get the um the financial assistance out of the uh federal and state for what we want to pursue here, and we're ideally situated uh for for those things. So that that, I think, is moving along, and I was encouraged by the conversations, and there'll be more in the future. So with that, going to adjourn the meeting now to a regular city council meeting on February fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two at seven PM, held virtually uh using Zoom. So thank you all.